I was thinking 20 after.
I feel like there's too much public interest here.
Okay, it's six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the August 20th, 2025, Meeting of the Georgetown Planning Commission. Our first order of business is reorganization of the committee. First, we'd like to acknowledge our newest member, Ira Roach III. Welcome. And just prior to him, Thomas Allen joined us. So, first thing we need to do tonight is elect some officer positions. Is there any nominations for a chair?
Motion to nominate Larry Rothling for chairman.
Second.
A motion second, we will take a roll call vote. Commissioner Briggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Mr. LaCates?
Yes.
And some yes as well.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next we need to elect a vice chair, is a nomination for a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Michael Briggs for Commissioner as vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, well, we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Briggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Mr. LaCates?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, congratulations. And now, are there nominations for secretary?
Nominate Chris LaCates to be secretary.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
And we'll vote, Commissioner Briggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Roach?
Yes.
Mr. LaCates?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, congratulations. Now for approval of the minutes from June 18th. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from June.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hosted, motion carried. Our next order of business is a public hearing, case number 2024-10-01, Penns Grant A, Sussex County Tax Parcel 135-14-34, Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Future Land Use Map, and application by Davidson Realty requesting an amendment to the town of Georgetown's Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for a 0.191 plus or minus acre portion of the 24.64 acre parcel from multifamily residential to commercial, and for a 1.2 acre portion of that same parcel from commercial to multifamily. Would the applicant like to take a stand?
Evening.
Yeah. Can we say something about that?
Sure.
Yeah, I think the chair, Tim Willard, the solicitor here, the chair just indicated that he'd like to maybe consolidate your presentation for both applications, because they're different on two parcels. But I know they, it's, they're sort of swapping different pieces, and they're the same. So, if you, if you're going to make a record, make, make a record for the entire application, and then they can vote on them separately.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you.
It does.
Okay.
We have a packed house tonight, so I don't see any reason why we can't do that. So, my name is Doug Lieberman with Larson Engineering Group, here representing Bill Davison, the developer for the property. And the two properties are the First Baptist Church of Georgetown property and the Northeastern Supply property. What we are looking to do... All right, Jamie. Okay, all right, so first, like you said, that we have two applications. The first is the church property, and we're looking to correct the change that was made when we went through the process before. We had intended the line we showed here, whatever reason the plan is, we submitted to this one, for the future land use change and also the rezoning line. So, we showed the correct area on the plans for what it is now, which is 14.08 acres. But the line was drawn in the wrong direction. So, we're looking to correct that, so that this small corner goes back to highway commercial, and this large piece here goes to MR2. And the future land use would be multifamily residential and highway commercial. So, highway commercial associated with this goes there, and then multifamily residential goes to this large piece in the rear of the property. So, that is that one. And just for surrounding zoning information, I know we've got a new planning commission member, so I'll kind of give an update, a little bit of an update where we are with, with that. Is that these two pieces are zoned highway commercial, along with this piece, this, this, and this, are all highway commercial. We've got a parcel up here for Village College Park that is zoned MR... I don't even remember what that is. Village College Park, we did it, so I should know.
It's, I think it's an MR1 RPC?
MR1, yeah. MR1, so we've got apartments and singles up in this area. This MR2 proposed for multifamily residential is townhouses. So, we're maintaining what the comprehensive plan wants by maintaining the strip of commercial along the front edge, and then also rezoning to multifamily residential MR2, which is what the comprehensive plan is looking for. So, any rezoning within the town actually states that they would want these parcels to be developed to townhouse residential. So, that's the direction that we're going here. The next piece... Okay, so this shows, this shows the paint that goes to highway commercial along here, and then that goes to MR2. Oops, went too fast. All right, so the, the second application associated with this parcel is for the lumberyard parcel, and this is case 2025-16. And with this property, again, we had a large property that's associated with the lumberyard. And when we came forward with the, the other development to rezone that to multifamily residential, they actually contacted the developer and said, hey, we've got this piece of property that's behind our stormwater pond. Would you be interested in taking this and adding it to your development? So, that's kind of what got us started going back down this route. So, we had to go through the same process to add that and show it now as multifamily residential, go through the future land use change to get that to multifamily residential. And then, again, the front remains highway commercial. So, in the end, we end up with both parcels here still zoned highway commercial. You still have the church and parking lot in their planned area, open space in the back, that is all one at one lot. And then, the Northeastern Supply is all of their commercial use is still maintained on, on the one lot. And then, we have a larger area in the back that will be zoned MR2. Future land use is multifamily residential. So, that is the two applications in a nutshell. So, if, oh, one thing I should point out is we did get approval from the Office of State Planning for the minor variation change for the first property, and then, as she said, gave us a no objection, I believe it was Brian, to the second change in the future land use and, and also the rezoning.
Good.
So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, try to anyway.
Any questions from the commission?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who wishes to speak against the application? Have we received any written comments?
We have not received written comments for or against. And there's no one on Zoom either? No one on Zoom?
Would someone like to make a motion?
So, how do we proceed with this, each one of these?
Each one, yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Sorry. Do you have to vote twice for each one?
So, right now, we have them as two, as two applications, each with two...
Two parts.
Two parts. So, it's the future land use change and the zoning change. But though I, potentially, they could be consolidated if you, if you believe.
Yeah, you can, because the elements are pretty much the same. They is for, consolidate, we like to keep them the same for the parcel. So, that's why Brian's got them separated by parcel, even though they're so interrelated. So, you can make a motion for the first one, which is parcel 34, I believe, that the application is to amend the comp plan to make it MR2, right?
Yep, in part.
In part, in part. And also to, to rezone the same parts MR2. So, it's to amend the comp plan and the zoning map.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was clear for the record.
Yeah, so the first one being, so it's, it's the change from, it's partially a change from multifamily residential to commercial, and then a part of it to, from commercial to multifamily. And the same thing with the zoning, is it's a partial change in one place, and then the partial change in another place. So, maybe it might be easier to do it. Yeah.
Just read it.
So, you want us to read this?
The first, yep, yep, the first, yep.
Want me to make a motion for that? Okay, I make a motion to recommend that the town council approve the proposed amendment to the town of Georgetown's Comprehensive Plans Future Land Use Map for a .191 plus or minus acre portion of a 24.64 plus or minus acre parcel from the multifamily residential to commercial, and for a 1.2 plus or minus acre portion of the same 24.64 plus or minus acre parcel from commercial to multifamily residential, identified as SC Tax Parcel 135-14.00-34.00.
Okay, have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Briggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Roach?
Aye.
Commissioner LaCates?
Aye.
And I, I vote aye as well. It's, it's a minor change to the property, it makes it more uniform, so I think it's a good... So, next, perhaps someone could make a motion to approve the zoning map change for the same parcels identified in the previous...
So, with this, what you want?
I think the record, if you said that, would be clear. That is to say, we need to rezone the property according to the prescription of the property previously described for the amendment of the comp plan.
Or, or just read it.
So, we can make, I'd like to make a motion to amend the partial 34, amend the comp plan to an MR2, and to rezone it.
We've already...
You already did the comp plan.
We've already amended the comp plan, now you rezone.
So, I want to rezone, okay, so I wanted to make a motion to rezone what we've previously mentioned to MR2?
And they...
For parts of it, as just described.
And then partially back to HC, a part of it, it's the same, yep.
Say, add to it what?
Perhaps just read it. There's a reason Brian spent a lot of time on that.
Yes.
Do you guys want to read the next one? Okay, motion to recommend that the town council approve the proposed amendment to the town of Georgetown's official zoning map for .191 plus or minus acre portion of a 24.64 plus or minus acre parcel from multifamily residential MR2 to highway commercial HC, and for a 1.2 plus or minus acre portion of that same 24.64 plus or minus acre parcel from highway commercial HC to multifamily residential MR2, as identified at Sussex County Tax Parcel 135-14.00-34.00.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Briggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Mr. Roach?
Aye.
Mr. LaCates?
Aye.
And I'm a, aye as well for the same reason. All right, so, next application?
Make a motion to recommend the town council approve the proposed amendment to the town of Georgetown's Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for a 1.326 plus or minus acre portion of a 6.295 plus or minus acre parcel from commercial to multifamily residential, identified as SC Tax, Sussex County Tax Parcel 135-14.00-34.01, as presented.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Take a roll call vote. Commissioner Briggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Roach?
Aye.
Mr. LaCates?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. One more.
I'll take a turn. Make a motion to recommend the town council approve the proposed amendment to the town of Georgetown's official zoning map for a 1.326 plus or minus acre portion of a 6.295 plus or minus acre parcel from highway commercial to multifamily residential, identified as SC Tax Parcel 135-14.00-34.01, as presented.
Okay, I've got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, we'll take a roll call vote. Commissioner Briggs?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
Commissioner Roach?
Aye.
Mr. LaCates?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the clarification. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, since there's nobody, well, is it, any public comments? Community Development Department report?
Sorry, we were, we were caucusing. Okay, thank you. So, a couple updates on a few things. So, as you may know, we're almost to, we're at sort of the four-year mark of the Comprehensive Plan as it was adopted in 2021. So, that means that the five-year update, or five-year review of the Comprehensive Plan will be due by July of 2026. So, we're, right now, we're sort of looking at how we're going to approach that right now. And then, so that will be something that the planning commission will be looking at in the next few months to see if there's any updates that need to be done in the review process of that. And next is a, we are already now pursuing an update of the Downtown Development District Plan. As you may know, the Downtown Development District was awarded to the town in 2016 by the state, and we have extended it at least once. And so, actually, now we're, we're arriving at the end of our 10-year term for the Downtown Development District, which of course incentivizes in a number of ways, development along East Market and generally to the east of town. So, we're, we're in the process of starting that update, and we are going to be applying for a renewal of the designation for a five-year term. And so, that is actually due in February, but we're hoping to submit it sooner. But right now, we did set up a website that's dedicated to information about the Downtown Development District Plan. It was, we just put a note on the website in the news section with the link to the, the website. It's, it's through a, a company called Zen City that allows us to do certain public outreach through, through our website and through their website. So, I will forward that to you all, so you can take a look at it. There will be a number of surveys and other public engagement opportunities through that website in order to give us feedback and direction as to how we can update the vision for the downtown. And, and yes, there'll be a couple of things to look at in the coming months, so take a look.
Who benefits from looking at that? I mean, do we, are we going to get the word out? Is it businesses that we want to look at that, or?
Businesses, residents, stakeholders, investors, potentially.
That they can see this.
So, so we, we have contact information of property owners who have used, utilized the Downtown Development District incentives already. Part of the renewal process is to, is to basically assess how well it's worked in the past 10 years? Okay, yep, so, so, yeah, so, so a part of this is to actually assess if the incentives are working or not. And so, we'll actually talk to developers who have used the incentives in the past, and partially to figure out...
How can we get new developers and people that haven't used it?
Well, yes, exactly, exactly. And we, we have a few ideas already of, of that. But yes, and so we'll be, we'll be similarly asking existing business owners and developers...
And that reach to others?
Yes, yes, exactly. And we'll, of course, rely on, on our various town officials, of which you are all included, to help get the word out to that as well. So, we would appreciate your disseminating some of this information as well, because you're all crucial to that success. But yes, very good questions, and that is, that is a key part of it, is to, is to figure out how to expand the reach of the, yep. Exactly, exactly. So, a few things that may be on the agenda for next month's planning commission meeting is three, three and seven Parsons Lane. We saw the minor variation determination request a couple months ago for, it was a change from residential to commercial. So, so that had been concurred by Office of State Planning that it was a minor variation. Similarly, so they will actually come in, just like you saw here, for the formal land use map and zoning map amendments. And what else might you see? So, it, it's not going to go in front of council next week, but in September, there will be a report and presentation, I guess, from, from our department about the cottage community proposal. So, we were asked...
The what?
The cottage community proposal, so it's the two little cottages on East Market Street. We were asked to review zoning provisions, potential zoning provisions for permitting that type of use in town. And so, so as a zoning amendment, were that to be passed along by town council, you will, of course, see it and review it and pass along your recommendations.
Has there been some interest in that, in the small and the little houses?
There, there has, as far, as, as we understand, yep, yep. There have been a few tours that were given as, to interested parties. We did take, town staff did take tours of those, those properties as well. So, that was, that was pretty interesting. So, yes, that will be likely discussed in September at a, at a council meeting. And so, I guess it will be up to council to how they want to move forward any potential zoning amendments as well. And of course, we're reviewing many other types of developments, large and small.
Any businesses? Like, you know, the Rite Aid's going down, we have some of that. I think I've heard some ideas that we're thinking of putting in there, but I know, I didn't know if there's anything up moving forward besides just talk? Anything's approached us on anything new coming?
We have, we have heard talk. I don't think we have a formal application, Jamie, is that? Yeah. Yeah, not right this minute, but, right. But yeah, we will, of course, you know, if you have specific ideas or, you know, if you've also heard talk and want us to look into something, you know, you can always let us know as well.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, any other questions, comments? All right. All right, yeah, and that's all I have.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? I did. I did, mhm, yep. We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Motion to adjourn.
With a motion second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
Tell you what, I really miss having a Rite Aid. I really miss my drugstore since they transferred our things to Dover.
Huh, really?
Yeah. Like, I'm going to go to Dover to get a prescription.
I transferred to Walmart.
Did you?
I have Walgreens, then they had a...